Welcome, good evening. Okay, it is at 5:34. Called the meeting to order at 5:34. All right, and let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Delarson gratitude to you for arriving. The quorum, could you do this, please?
Well, then I guess we should stand, put our right hands over our hearts and begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, first order of business then is a roll call. Trusty Rotuski Heinz.
Here.
Trusty Morris.
Here.
Trusty Hinkin here. Trusty David and Trusty Manning are not here and they did not call in with the... Well, perhaps they'll show up, but for the time being, they're absent.
If you wanted to excuse them, you have to motion to excuse them and then tell me we have to second.
Technically, we can't. How many excuse on this thing?
Okay, very good. Is there a motion to excuse, please?
They didn't call in, so...
That's the one caveat is you're not excused if you don't give us a reason as to why you're not here.
So, so we're not, we're not entertaining a motion to excuse?
No.
Okay. I got confused. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, approving the minutes. Let's take a moment to review the minutes. Make sure they square with our memories.
I move that we approve the minutes of last month's meeting.
Okay, it's been moved. Is there a second?
I second it.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
In favor, opposed? Oh, great. Okay, so the minutes have been approved. Aaron, yes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, you did a roll call.
On the minutes?
You know, you're all through, that's fine.
Yeah. Hi, John. Welcome.
You think about that like, man, if I come down here a highway this time of... Every month I do the same thing. It's like the 101.
How long have you been doing that, L. Feller?
I think I left the house about 3:30 or something.
All right. John, we've done the Pledge of Allegiance and the roll call and approved the minutes, so we are on item number five. Any comments on the agenda items from the public?
I have not received any public comment.
Thank you, Grace. Okay, public comments from the floor? Nobody here. I guess we're ready to hear their director's report, please, Robert.
I have some documents I'd like to share with you. I'll maybe phone these to you.
How's the target so far?
I'm real busy.
Hope backups doing better for you.
You will, they're hard for me, too.
That's a long wait.
Yeah.
Okay, President Hinkin, members of the board, happy to be with you this evening. And I have several things I'd like to comment on and report on. First of all, by way of follow-up, the Community Inclusiveness Committee that I've been working on forming, that involves staff members. The membership has been established. We have not met yet, but the first meeting has been scheduled for Friday, November 20th. So, I'll begin to give you reports from that committee beginning next month. I want to thank Board President Alan Hinkin and the City's Communications Division for the creation of a very well-done video highlighting library services during the pandemic, in which I sent the link to each of you about. Appreciate the good job that was done with that. Also, for your information from the work done by the Communications Division of the city, the library, we've learned on short notice that representatives from Telemundo 52, Spanish television station, were coming in advance of the Halloween Day, Day of the Dead program that we had. And congrats to Monica Viegas, one of our staff members.
I'm gonna go and get my mask. Once again, I forgot.
Okay.
It's the third time today I've walked on a place to go and get my mask.
But we're glad you're here.
I think you'd remember it by now, but you don't.
Anyway, Monica Viegas, who is a Spanish-speaking employee at the library, represented us well during the interview that aired that evening. Next item, due to Jamie Lee Beck's idea of a virtual murder mystery being played out inside the library, staff member April Keith, whom you met last month, created, wrote, and filmed the adventure and posted about it on social media for several days in October. Now, I've provided you a copy of an email that April sent all staff, wherein she thanks everyone, and then she gives some very interesting statistics about the traffic on social media that that murder mystery generated. So, very successful. It was obviously fun to do. And then definitely helped to raise awareness of the library. Had a lot of positive feedback, made some people smile. And I'll just interject that when patrons came to our Halloween Day of the Dead event, several of them recognized some of the staff members who were dressed in... Well, one was dressed in costume. April was dressed as Thursday. And then Ricardo, who was the butler in the murder mystery, he was there, not in his butler costume, but they recognized him. And they wondered why he was not in jail.
And you were a great victim.
Well, thank you. I keep reiterating that I am very grateful that it was a fictitious account, but it was fun. And other creative works are being considered for the future. Regarding the Halloween Day of the Dead Grab and Go event that was held on Friday, October 30th, which included staff members dressing in various costumes, festive decorations outside the library, and winding among the trees in front of the cultural center, we provided both activity, goodie bags, and free books were available for patrons. We have free books left over from the summer lunch program. Staff, staff members distributed 778 bags, including the adults, all of whom did not get a bag. We estimate about 1,000 people attended the event. And it went very well. Appreciate the city's support and went very smoothly. And many appreciative members of the community and happy faces that day. Successful and well-received Grab and Go programs have continued and will continue, such as Coffee and Coloring returned on October 13th, where we provide some instant coffee and cookies in a bag. And it continued again this morning. So, we're doing that the second Tuesday of each month. And we're getting 30 to 40 people to come out for that. Nano Rymo Month. I think we talked about that last month a little bit, but that's, that's where... It's actually an international thing where people are encouraged to write creatively. And they're encouraged with prompts and they're encouraged to get together. And with COVID, they're getting together online to... And the idea is to set goals, to write every day and that sort of thing. We've been providing Grab and Go bags for anyone interested to get sheets of paper and prompts to help inspire writing, bookmarks, things like that. And we've had about 15 of those go out. So, a lot of these, I mean, it's all new because we haven't been through COVID. So, so we're happy to see interest in these as we continue on. Next up is International Game Day. And we're recognizing that this Friday with bags of game-oriented supplies that people can come and get from the library. On November 18th, we'll be doing a Teen Geek Club Grab and Go. A Teen Geek Club was something that we had just started before COVID. And the idea is, the idea of pre-COVID was just to provide a space for teens to come and share whatever their, their common interests are, whatever they geek about. That is a verb nowadays, if you didn't know. And, and we had a small gathering starting to do that. It was actually a teenage girl that, that asked if we could start one. And, and she's a longtime library user. Well, now we're gonna try this and for your information, some of the things included in that bag, we actually got some neon green backpacks that we're giving away for those who come. They're getting a bookmark or pin for mental health awareness and some resources regarding mental health. I, I had to ask Jackie, so what are we giving away in these bags? Some candy, Avatar Bingo game, some buttons, perler beads, and various things that are kind of nerdy and geeky that a lot of teens will enjoy. And as part of this, this effort, we're gonna be asking questions to see if they want to try to form an online meetup group. Thanks to the diligent efforts of Shay Hocken and other staff members assisting, the library tried for the first time today an online version or Zoom edition of the previously very popular Books and Barks program. So, you have a flyer about that. That happened today at 3 o'clock. We did have some people participate. I haven't heard the details yet, but it did happen. And so, we intend to continue it. We really appreciate the members of the High Desert Obedience Therapy Dog Group who, who works with us on this, and they're willing to, to do it, to the owners and the, and the dogs. In the last two weeks, the library has begun to offer print by appointment service. And that's what the brochure is about. It says wireless printing on it. This brochure explains to patrons how they can take advantage of this service. In short, anyone can send a print job from their desktop or mobile device to our printer in the library. They then call the library to schedule a time to pick up the print job. And then we charge... They have to have a library card, but they can get one online. And then we charge the cost of the print job to their library account, and they can pay that online. Printing is a very popular service that we've, we offer pre-COVID. We've gotten requests every week, not necessarily every day, but every week, multiple requests. I just come in and print something? And we've been sorry we couldn't do that often.
Give it exactly what they want to print.
I'm sorry, what?
Give it exactly what they want printed.
Resume is very common. And that's the most common thing that I've heard of. Honestly, I don't know, but... So, we've been referring them to, you know, Staples and places that we, we know about. We, we're definitely the least expensive in town. We just cover our costs, basically, the city's costs. And it's a very important service to a lot of people who don't have printers.
You can't forget any blowback from the commercial printers. I doubt you will, but that's possible.
Yeah, and libraries have gotten pushback from businesses throughout our history to some extent. But, so, so that's a battle that, that libraries have fought before. I, I mean, this, this dates me, but way back when VHS videos first came out and libraries started offering VHS movies. There's a huge pushback from VHS rental places that made national news. And, and we got through that. You know, some people don't like it, some of the business owners, but... I mean, it's limited what they can do with us. For example, we don't help them with formatting. We can't coach them. But if, if they have the print job done and they're willing to work under our constraints, then they can do it. Self-service face, basically, except it has to be by appointment. Yeah.
So, is this, this is a service that's offered by some kind of middle organization? Like, who's WWprinterOn.net? Is that, is that someone we subscribe to and they connect to where?
You may get a call on here because Renee actually set it up for us.
Renee?
So...
Yeah, come on over. I mean, yes, there is a third party. Renee, Renee actually set it up.
So, the third party is called Envisionware. And basically, it's the same software that we use for our management of the computers within the library. The ones that schedule a patron's time and they will sign up for a time and it schedules them. They offer a printing service as well, so we piggybacked off that and just, I guess, added the printing component to give the patrons the ability to print off-site. And when we open up, they can print while they're in the library as well.
Thank you, Renee. That's really cool.
Thank you. Okay. For your information, by previous arrangement, Jamie Lee Beck, the Assistant Director, Jackie C. Camp, you Services Librarian, and myself conducted a live Zoom presentation to staff members of the Antelope Valley Partners for Health back the last week of October. Jamie Lee provided several live demonstrations of services available to patrons with a library card and which AVPH field workers found very useful for them to share with families that they meet with and serve. The, I learned much more about AVPH when Dr. Manning arranged for a meeting to meet with their executive director. And they do a lot of great work going into people's homes to teach parents how to parent a little bit and, and help the families become more aware of resources in the community. And so, we've been, took a while to give this schedule, but 39 people, 39 staff members of AVPH, attended that Zoom session. And they were very happy to learn about the resources, such as online tutoring, the things that we are offering that, that they can then now share with their families if they visit. On November 5th, the library co-hosted the second program in the Be the Change series, along with Glendale Public Library and Southern California Library Cooperative. You have a flyer that was created for that event in recognition of Native American Heritage Month. That's what this program was connected with. The Fall Lunch and Library Outreach Program, in partnership with Palmdale School District, is underway with about 5,000 books having been received at the library last Friday. This is grant money that we applied for, $10,500. And this time, we're using it all for free books to give out to the children at 15 sites that Palmdale School District is distributing meals to on Mondays, Wednesdays, Wednesdays and Fridays. So, I gave you a copy of the schedule. That's hot off the press. We've just got that arrived yesterday of when we'll be going to those, those sites. Next item, as announced previously, the library began to reinstitute the charging of fines for materials that are kept beyond their due dates back in September. For your information, the library is now in the process of reinstituting, reinstituting collection agency services that include referring long delinquent accounts to a collection agency to help get materials returned or paid for. This service, we have an agreement with a, it's a business called Unique Management Services. They work with a lot of libraries across the country as a collection agency. And, and again, these are people who have, we give them a lot of grace as far as, yes, we do charge fines. However, they do not get referred to a collection agency until it's been at least two months that they have not responded to our repeated late notices and, and warnings. So, we are reinstituting the collection agency service this month. We're in the process of getting that going again.
Oh, we discussed this in the past, but refresh my memory. What is the approximate rate of return to people who have returned services when they're confronted with a collection agency?
I actually know that answer because, better than I did, because I and Library Systems and Services is working on the details of the, of the report that the city has requested from us regarding the, the free fines discussion that we will all be engaging in. And I just got a report from Unique. The return on investment is four to one. So, for every dollar spent by the city, by the library, paying Unique Management Services to go, to go after these accounts, four times that dollar amount is returned, either in, in the materials being returned or cash being paid.
Does that mean that for four phone calls, that of, for over two fines, you get one return? Is that what you're telling me?
Uh, no, no. For, for every dollar, because we, we pay Unique Management Services for each, each time we refer a patron to them. And then, I think it's, I think it's $10 per referral that we, we pay them. And then, for every dollar we pay them,
I see.
four times that amount is returned to us.
If people, let's say they have 10 books outstanding and they're faced with a $20 bill, what percentage of those people, if you have this number, would say, you know, I'll give you the $20, so I give you the $10 back, 10 books back, if you get rid of my $20 bill? Is any of that happening or is any of that bargaining, if you will?
If, if I follow your correction correctly or your question correctly, the number one thing we want are the books... the number one thing we want are the books back.
That's right.
And if they'll give us the books back, then everything is waived except for the late fees. And sometimes we'll even forgive some of those. Depends on how good the story is, frankly, that they tell us. But by policy, we just want the books back. And so if they will give us all the books back, then they don't have to pay anything except for the late fees.
Approximately, if you, at this phase in, what percentage of people will do that?
That I do not have at my fingertips. But I believe that's going to be part of the report that the city's going to get, and eventually you'll see that data.
I would mention to know that people are just saying, oh, screw it. I know it's in a corner, but the devil would have it. But when they started facing with a $23 bill, then somehow they find their way out of the corner.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Each day, I don't have a figure to be accurate.
Yeah, you'll be getting, you'll be getting that kind of information.
Well, so Robert, is this the appropriate moment to ask about the reconsideration of the fine policy?
Yes, sure.
Is there anything new on that? I'm kind of excited to hear the reinstitution of this.
Yeah. The, number one, I will take most of the responsibility because there are pieces of, so the city got a report from Library Systems and Services. But that led to a meeting between myself, Eric, and Kerry Smith. Following that meeting, they asked some very good questions and wanted some more detail and some more reports. Since that time, folks at Library Systems and Services has been working on that. And there are a couple of pieces that were on, that were in my court, my assignment, that I have not gotten to. And it's actually been waiting on me. This week, I should be able to finish my portion of it. Then that report will go to the city for their consideration, and that's where we're at.
Okay, is there anything we can do to be helpful?
I appreciate your patience. I apologize we didn't get to it sooner.
Yeah, I get that you're.
There are a lot of things to consider.
Okay, well, I do hope that we get informed of when the city council will be hearing the report, so we can be present at that.
Oh, okay. I'm glad you asked, said that. It won't go to city council first. When I say the city, I mean Kerry and Eric. Yeah.
It'll come to you first.
Yes, yeah. I didn't mean that.
We just want to see the data.
But they will ultimately have to go to the city council, right? This change of policy.
If anything's going to be, yeah, they'd have to go to them, but it would come to you before that.
Thank you.
He said exactly what I was going to say. You would make a policy, if you want to make a change, you would make a policy recommendation, and we can help you with the format of that and everything. And for consideration for that policy decision, especially if it's, let me talk into the mic, especially if it's going to affect revenue generated potentially from the library. That policy recommendation would come from you, and it would go to the city council. And they would consider the item at that time, sure.
Thanks for asking the questions, and I apologize for any confusion. When I say the city, oftentimes I'm talking about Kerry and Eric. In fact, usually I am.
What type of data points will be included in the report? I'm curious, like, break down what type of materials, juvenile, digital video?
I'm not sure that's going to get in that much detail. We can get in that much detail. I know it's going to give like historical data about how much has been owed over the years and for how many years. And things like the return on investment when patrons are sent to the collection agency, things like that. I'm not sure we're going to get into the types of materials. If you want that, we can get that later personally. I'm not sure that it's that pertinent, but it might be.
Just to really kind of get a, I'm looking at it from the standpoint, we want the materials back.
Yeah, yes.
So it's like, is it the super expensive materials that are outstanding? Like, you know, maybe videos might be, sometimes videos are more expensive than paperback books.
Okay, okay.
Just for, because I like data.
Yeah, yeah.
I like doing analysis of information.
And we can dig into, honestly, I haven't looked at what has been generated yet. I've just been working on my part when I could get to it. That's my honest answer.
I'm just wondering whether or not something like, have we done any programs where we want the materials back? For a week of all fees are waived, bring your materials back.
I don't think that's been done, but honestly, that's my assignment is to come up with a history of fines and fees with this library board back into ancient history, and that's what I'm working on right now.
Yes, because I'm just trying to think back, and I know I've been on and off of the board for multiple years. And I remember that, yes, we've always, all the times that I've been on the board, there has been a fines and fee policy. But I don't remember if we ever did, you know, how that, we're not going to pay them, but other than you don't have to pay your fees, but I don't know. I don't remember us ever trying that, like, just, it's a grace period. October is grace period. Bring them all materials back. If you have any ass due materials, bring them back and fees are waived.
Yeah, that's going to be part of the, to our best ability, we're going to provide a history of the fines and fees as implemented by this board. And again, that's my assignment.
But I don't remember it in past times.
Yes.
I'm just kind of curious, just even, I kind of like to back up to what you just said. Is that when we're trying to make the decision that we're making, like, even knowing the percentage of people who never have an issue, you know? And all of those kind of things make a difference in how we would look at something. So I think that kind of info is stuff we really need to kind of make that, that decision to see what percentage of the population are we dealing with? What age of person is the most likely not to return items? All those things have a solution in them if we know, if we write, if we ask the right questions. So I'm kind of seeing why I'd like to see the data as well.
Agreed. And I look forward to having those conversations with you. Again, I apologize it's taken this long. Once we get the report, then we'll be able to have a meaningful conversation because there are lots of caveats even with the data.
Yeah.
You all know that.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Anything else on that?
No, thank you so much, Robert.
Okay, the next, let's see. For the board's information, I received word in October that the LA County Health Order pertaining to COVID-19 had been revised, so the public libraries could now reopen to walk-in services under certain conditions and restrictions. It was very interesting to me how little fanfare there was, but as I thought more about it, in fact, it was almost like in a, as a by-the-way email that I got. Like, oh, by the way, if you haven't seen this, the LA County Health Order has been revised. And after I thought more about it, I thought, well, maybe it's not surprising because there's so many things to consider now. So that led to some discussions with, between me and library staff, and then also with the city. Yes, you are the city, Kerry Smith and Eric Nebraska. To consider our possibly reopening to some walk-in services. After careful review of the revised order, it was mutually determined in a meeting with Kerry and Eric that the benefits that would be gained by allowing patrons into the building again would not outweigh the things that we and our patrons would lose in the process. Most of the virtual programs, pre-recorded programs, grab-and-go programs, et cetera, would be significantly curtailed or completely lost if we tried to allow patrons in for browsing purposes. Therefore, it was decided the library would not reopen for any walk-in services at this time, except for one. That is our legal aid service, which if you're not familiar with that, pre-COVID, patrons could call in advance and once a week, come in and have online session with an attorney for free out of the Los Angeles area. We feel like we could accommodate that on an appointment basis. And so Aaron is actually our primary contact with the legal aid people, and we're in communication with them to see if we can come up with an agreeable schedule where that could happen. So just regarding that topic, I will just add, in addition to my notes, since March, I've looked forward to the opportunity to reopen in some form or fashion. When we finally got word that, okay, you can do it under these conditions, we've learned a lot since March. And and as we talked about it, as we thought about it, and then when we actually met, I don't think Kerry would mind me quoting her. You can let me know if she does. It was Kerry who asked, so what would patrons really be gaining if we allowed them to come in? That they can't get right now? Because for one thing, we were talking about, there are lots of restrictions. It could only be 25% capacity of the building. We'd have to monitor that. There would be cleaning and disinfecting that has to be done after, how often? Well, who knows? We were talking about, well, if we did this, maybe it'd only be by appointment, coming in and browse by appointment. Or maybe one hour a day, or maybe one hour three times during the day. And all of that can sound good on the surface, but my big, a big headache, expense, frankly, cleaning, disinfecting, exposing folks to the virus, more perhaps. And my biggest concern was the library right now looks like a Santa's workshop. It does not look like the library that you saw back in March. Alan, you saw a part of it, but we have, we have tables set up around, throughout the library where assembly lines create grab-and-go bags. Pre-recorded programs are going on in the stacks. We have a small army of life-size cut-out superhero figures that were used as part of the the grab-and-go decorations. Now, you know, we can clean all that up. But, you know, so here's the but, but what expense? And would we be able to continue doing the grab-and-gos, the things that we're doing now that are very popular? Which I had no idea they would be, but they are. And when Kerry asked that question, so what would patrons really gain? The only thing I could come up with is, well, they would get to browse themselves. That's the only thing that they would gain. And that led me to say, and actually, I mean, that'd be a nice convenience for them to have. However, patrons are actually getting in some ways better service right now because they're able to call us, ask us for advice on what to read, or if they know what they want to read, they can have us go fetch it right into the door. There isn't inconvenience of having to come by appointment. However, it's all bagged for them and checked out. It's pretty convenient service. And they're actually getting better service in many ways because there's a conversation that goes on with the library staff member about, and then we get questions like, you know, my child is a low-interest, low reading level reader. Do you have any ideas? And so there's a conversation that goes on. And then a staff member, professional staff member is picking items out for that patron. When people come in and browse on their own, they don't always ask for help. So these are some of the reasons why I agreed. You know, the privilege of browsing yourself would be nice. And the other caveat is all the library, every library that I have heard that has reported that they've opened, people are not banging down the doors. People are very hesitant to come out for whatever reasons. They're loving the curbside or front door service. Nobody is coming close to hitting that 25% threshold. And so to go through all that effort, just so that a few people could triple in and browse the collection and, by the way, touch things while they're in there. That's why we decided just to stay on the current course for now. So that's my report on that topic. Any questions or comments about any of that?
I'd like to just make a comment on that, is that some of this, you might find that you might want to change the way you operate in the future permanently. Because, you know, a lot of people, what I'm hearing just from people out there is that they kind of like the convenience of some of the picking stuff up, like their groceries and all of that. People have busy lives. And then having that one-on-one service like that, I mean, you might find that for a lot less work, you're able to serve a lot more people that way, you know? I mean, I can just see that a lot of businesses changing the way they model their business based on things that you never thought would work. And then, as you say, you're kind of surprised that, you know, things work out differently. So it might be interesting to see how that flushes out in the end.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Let me just say it's a great decision. I think that it's the right decision. I think that whoever asked the question, Kerry or somebody, you know, that it's not just about what's going to be gained, but what's going to be lost. I think that's a really important question. And particularly at this time when this surge is going on all over the country, and this is not a time really to lighten up. I think it was a really good decision.
Thank you. Thank you for that feedback. Okay, then the last item, I am very happy to announce that Nathan Garcia has been appointed to fill a part-time library associate to position with the library. Nathan has served as a very willing and reliable volunteer in the library, or the past year. We are thrilled to have him join our team as a paid employee. He comes to us with a bachelor's degree in history from University of California, Santa Barbara. And he is currently enrolled in the Graduate Library School Program at San Jose State University. Nathan also holds a part-time position currently at the Museum of History and Art in Lancaster. And he likes to build things, and he's not afraid of lifting things. That helps too. That's not why he got the job. I'm sorry, what?
He likes to build things?
Yeah.
What does that mean?
He actually likes to build things, like a carpenter type. He shared that. Again, that's not why he got the job, but it didn't hurt. He does that at Mola. He helps build their exhibit space. That's it on my report. Unless you have any other questions or comments?
Very good questions, David.
I was making one comment. A few days ago, I sent you a mail regarding a book conversation, shall we call it?
I'm sorry, say it again?
All those books that were put together as a conversation? Remember I sent you that email? A bunch of books on the shelf.
Oh, yes, yes.
Maybe you want to send it to the members and maybe you find out.
Okay, yeah, I will do that, yes. Yeah, appreciated that humor, and the library staff enjoyed it too. So I will forward that on. A little fun image that Dr. Manning sent me. Yeah, yeah.
Pretty clever indeed. It took a lot of time to do it. Let's try to clever.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Staff comments? Eric, anything for us?
Just one, one thing. I don't know if, hopefully you have had a chance to visit the city's Healing and Honor Field at Paloma Vista Park. Just want to make sure you guys are aware that tomorrow at 11 o'clock is a Veterans Day ceremony. There'll be some speakers and also a flyover at that time. And then afterwards, individuals who purchased a flag for the healing field, starting in the afternoon, will be allowed to come in, pick up their flag. And then that pickup will continue for the next, until they're all gone. So just wanted to invite you out tomorrow at 11 o'clock to the final ceremony of the Healing and Honor Field.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
A little follow-up on that.
Yeah.
JJ was kind enough to do one on me, put a flag and put it there. And it reminded me that I have a brother-in-law that I knew was in Vietnam, but it didn't do anything beyond that one. So I talked to him.
Right.
He was in the Macon Delta in 1968. He has four purple hearts, and I was not.
Unbelievable.
So needless to say, we put it there.
Unbelievable. I volunteered out there today for a couple of hours and needless to say, the stories that I heard and the veterans and first responders I was able to talk to, amazing. Two hours and it. amazing, two hours and it, unbelievable. Met a metal gentleman who was in the Army for forty years. He says, they kicked him out at sixty.
Forty years?
Forty years. I I do not know, but.
Forty years must be nine stars or something.
I do not know, forty years. Next, I guess the rank he was at at sixty, they told him he needed to go and he went kicking and screaming.
I wasn't aware of that, being in the military for forty years.
Forty years.
We don't.
Amazing, so if you are able to come out tomorrow, it's a, it's an amazing experience for sure.
The reason I ask you about rank is you have to go up in rank each time what puts you out, so how hard can you go?
Don't know, I mean, another gentleman who was in mid-thirties, thirty, thirty-five years in the military. So I I don't know what their rank was, but.
Maybe if you reach a certain rank, they just sort of grandfather you, I find that interesting. I didn't know that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, trustee comments, I'd like to make a comment. I want to acknowledge that yesterday and today are Kristallnacht. It's Kristallnacht occurred in nineteen thirty-eight, November ninth and tenth in in Germany. But this is the eighty-second anniversary of Kristallnacht. But it's, the word Kristallnacht means the night of broken glass and it refers to a gigantic pogrom that took place throughout Nazi Germany in which Jewish businesses and synagogues and other Jewish-owned buildings had their windows shattered, hence it's called Kristallnacht, the night of broken glass. But tens of thousands of buildings were lost, but more importantly, an unknown number of Jews were killed and were taken off to concentration camps, that number will never be known. And most historians look at Kristallnacht as the beginning of the Final Solution. You know, that that culminated in in the Holocaust and the death of the six million Jews and six million others, Roma, LGBT people, people with disabilities and so forth. And the reason I want to bring that up tonight is that it was preceded by a couple of years in May tenth of nineteen of nineteen thirty-three by a gigantic book burning. During May of of nineteen thirty-three, the German Student Union burned books that were considered un-German. Books by Jews, books by communists, books by socialists, books by degenerates, books about degenerate art, Bauhaus, all that kind of stuff. And so the point that I wanted to make was that the burning of books leads to the burning of people. And it's really important for us who are involved in the library, both the paid staff and the volunteers, to remember that the work that we're doing on behalf of the library is really an effort to create kindness and civilization and decency among all people. And so that's the comment I wanted to make in connection with Kristallnacht.
Point of personal privilege, Mr. President.
Of course.
Uh, this is a, no pressure request, I will not twist your arm, however, I would welcome if you would be willing to put that in writing, I would like to find a place to post that on our website, on Facebook. As just a one, one voice of many, but in our community, I I would welcome that if you would be willing to share that. Thank you.
Was Kristallnacht November eleventh, is that what it was?
I'm sorry?
November eleventh, Kristallnacht?
November ninth and tenth.
Ninth and tenth, interesting.
Other comments please, trustees? Okay, hearing none. Adjourned, motion to adjourn?
So what were you adjourned?
Okay, adjourned at six twenty-one. Thank you, everybody, thanks so very, very much, see you in a month.